Good afternoon, study session, mayor and city council meeting. Three P M Wednesday, February fifth, twenty twenty, city hall complex. I call this meeting to order. Number one, number two, discussion items. Number one, discussion water connection fees, Mr. Massey.
How come we don't have a pledge of allegiance? Even in the study session, we should honor the flag all the time.
I don't know.
USA.
You should put that, pledge of allegiance of every one of our citizens. You should always honor the flag. Mayor, can we please have a pledge of allegiance?
Yes, yes, we're gonna, we're gonna go from, uh, we'll have the president, he'll make it number two. Please rise for the president, Mayor Corrigan, for your place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The left side, that's the left side. From up here.
We even got Cholo up there. You guys overcharge the people a little bit.
Okay, so, uh, we'll go discussion item, number one, discussion water connection fees.
All right, um, Mr. Mayor, I think the deputy city manager has some information that he can share with the council regarding his investigation with regards to water connection fees. I would remind, though, the council that water connection fees that we have are in ordinance that were adopted by, um, city council in two thousand and four after an economic, uh, study that was done, uh, by the, um, city's outside economic expert, Dan Jackson. And again, the idea of a connection fee, uh, you have to go through the process of, uh, doing a study, posting it, having a public hearing, and all those things were done and it was duly adopted. And the purpose of the, um, study is to derive unit costs based on unit, uh, units of development. And how they have determined that in the residential side is based on the size of the meter. And so we have three quarters to one inch meters, which is for all residential, uh, connections. And so we have one uniform meter cost, uh, based on that connection. And then, uh, also on the residential side, it's based, uh, for sewer connection fees, is based on plumbing fixtures. So that depends upon how many restrooms or bathrooms you have, sinks, showers, connections for, um, washing machines, things like that. And then all of those get added up and a total is then derived for, uh, the connection fee for sewer. And the water connection fee and the sewer connection fee is due to be paid upon, um, payment of the building, uh, building permit. And so they are substantial and you'll see that, uh, several of the cities around Arizona have quite, uh, high connection fees, but...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I want to respond to Mr. Massey. Mr. Massey, I understand what happened in two thousand and four. The people, the Nogales International brought out a good study that our permits commercially and residentially are not doing very well in comparison with Santa Cruz County. Now, the population of Rio Rico is growing, the population of the town of Saguarita is working, and a lot of those people are coming over here for employment opportunities, especially in the educational field. Now, if we have a cost, I don't care who did the study. I'm here today to react to the economic conditions of today. If you're in business and you can't sell what you have, if you're in business and you can't sell the blinds on the shelf, are you gonna keep selling them at the same price if nobody's coming in to buy them? Well, that's the thing. Mayor, if I, please indulge for two or three minutes here.
That's all right.
There are some people, realtor, contractors that have approached me that don't want to do business in the city of Nogales because of the cost. The story that came out in the international about how far we are lagging with issuing commercial and residential permits. We need, we as a council, not the bureaucracy, we as a council need to respond and have people come into the city limits to purchase homes here in the city. They tell me that the resale of homes is good, but the building of new homes is not. Now, I just can't see us wanting to annex so that we can get a bigger body count. And at the same time, we know factually, the data presents it factually, that people are leaving Nogales because it's too hard to do business here and the price of doing business here is too costly. Now, what more facts do we need so that we, I feel that we as a council should reverse this trend so people start building in Nogales? So that people can say, "I want to live in the city of Nogales." We shouldn't have to be going down and say, "Oh, well, let's go up north and see how much property." How many plots are available to build land there, to build property there? I just don't, don't think, I don't care what happened in two thousand and four, I want to know what's happening now. And the trend is not in our favor. We need, we shouldn't be worried that we're gonna get eight hundred dollars more a body for all the extra twelve hundred bodies in the annexation. Instead, we should be worrying about what are we going to do here in our own backyard to take care of doing business? Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead, did you have something else to say?
Yes, I just, uh, one, before I turn it over to the deputy city manager maybe to explain, uh, where his, uh, the spreadsheet that he's presented, uh, is derived from. Again, the, it's based on a study of the actual cost to the city to provide the capital infrastructure necessary to provide service to new development. So obviously, the, the, the philosophy behind that is, uh, when you levy the, um, connection fees based on the actual cost that the house will create for the city, the philosophy is that that new development needs to pay its own way. And so if the connection fees are not charged, uh, at the time that the building permits are pulled so that new development pays their actual cost of like their prorated contribution to the infrastructure, then the residents, uh, as a whole who are already here will have to pick up those costs through increased user, user fees, not connection fees, but the monthly sewer and water fees because those costs will exist and the city's utility departments have to, have to pay for those costs. So, um...
Mr. Mayor?
Just go ahead.
Here again, please, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Massey's making a presentation that I don't agree with because you can talk about all the costs that you want to, but if we have nobody building here, what's unfair is that we aren't producing any revenue. And the presentation by Mr. Massey should be done by you. He's the attorney, you're the chief executive officer, you're the one who makes these recommendations. You should be making these presentations.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, give input. Yes, right, so, so here's where we are, he kind of let it off. And what you're looking at on, on the screen is just baseline information of what is actual today. Deputy city manager did a little research over the past week to find out, because we've all been kind of talking and riddled really with information, we don't even know what's out, what's around us. So this is ground truth from his research on what is happening with the other cities and municipalities. That's the baseline of where we are today. What I think we need to do is, whether we pay a consultant or somebody to actually do some, we talked about it before, find out what this math equation really looks like and figure out what that is and then make a educated decision based on all the facts and assumptions in front of us about exactly what you're saying or some kind of middle ground in between to move forward. Because bottom line is, we need people to build and develop here in the city of Nogales. And we just got to figure out how to get there. We don't have, I don't think we have enough information in front of us right now to make educated decisions moving forward, but we've got to do some more homework to get there. He was just kind of setting the, the table for what happened in the past, but I agree. We need to, we need to take the baton and run with it forward, we just got to figure out how to get there.
Yeah, one of, one of the things, uh, you know, I, that second one from the top, John, is that Marana? It is, Marana?
Yes, sir.
And Marana charges one thousand two hundred and fifty-seven? Marana?
Good afternoon.
Yes? No, no, I just, no, I'm just saying, is that Marana, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, there's two for Marana, I believe, Marana and Marana North.
Yeah.
Marana, uh, is one thousand two hundred and fifty-seven dollars for their water connection fees and Marana North is three thousand four hundred and ninety-seven dollars for water connection fees and this is for, uh, three quarter inch meter on the residential.
Yeah, because the reason I'm saying is because as you know, Marana is one of the fastest growing in, in annexation in the state of Arizona. And, uh, and, uh, you know, to look, to look at that, I never expect the Marana to be that low.
Mr. Mayor, I think, I think the deal is on North Marana, it's the newer section. It's where Dove Mountain is and all that.
Yeah.
All that, all that is all brand new, so they charge a lot more.
Yeah.
Old Marana, which is not the, the...
Well, it's kind of like what Councilman Arona is saying, you know, uh, our annexation, uh, if our annexation is successful, that'd be the new Nogales and this'd be the old Nogales. So why, you know, but what I'm saying is that it's a big difference. And, and, and I remember, I remember back when they started with this, uh, if I'm not mistaken, Hugh Hollif was the one that started this, John, if I'm not mistaken. He's the one that started with all this, with this and the sewer connection fees. Because at the time, we were trying to get Middle Hills out of, uh, Setic and into the sewer system and, and they came up with, with these numbers. But my concerns are, and, and, you know, correct me if I'm wrong. We've been charging this for all this time, but we really haven't been doing any improvements that I know of, you know? We haven't been doing any improvements, major improvements, uh, infrastructure improvements, except for some paving projects that we've done some streets. So, so if, if the money that we get from this, this, these fees for development, uh, supposed to go for that. So if it doesn't go there and, and, uh, and the previous administration really didn't spend a lot of paving and improvement projects like this, has this money been collected somewhere, or we're gonna be using it someday?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And, and the money from, not only from that, but also from the, the usage, the people pay, that goes into the same pot?
It, it's tracked differently, Mr. Mayor. You, you all just approved, uh, rehabilitation of a water tank?
Yes.
That money came out of the water connection fees.
Yeah.
Quite expensive and, and whatever.
Yeah, but we also going for grants and stuff like that.
Absolutely, we're, we're in the process of going for a WIFIPAC.
Yeah. And then...
And that will be paid back from the, uh, from the, uh, question, the use of, uh, consumption.
From the consumption, okay. So, so, uh, just, just, Mr. Massey, if, if, uh, and I don't want to take this to another two, three months down the road. If, yeah, take right there, John, if we were to come down, say, it says two thousand seven hundred and eighty-six, is it?
Yes, sir.
If we were to come, using that example, that, that, if we were to come down to the level of, uh, one thousand nine hundred, one thousand five hundred, how, can you tell me how much damage that would do to the city of Nogales or, or our, our so-called fund for us for, to, for improvements? Is it, where's the director at?
Oh, he's in San Antonio.
In San Antonio.
But, Mr. Mayor, um, if, if we were to reduce it to one thousand dollars?
No, 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 I'm talking to the one thousand nine hundred, one thousand...
Two thousand seven hundred and eighty-six, Mr. Mayor, reduce it by a thousand dollars? Yeah, so I, I could, I could probably calculate that out for us based on history only, but it all, it all depends, right? Uh, so, what, what would happen if we reduced it, right? Well, if we annex up north, right, and they start building out, uh, uh, Benne Blanca Heights, the difference would be a lot, right? But if we just continue doing a few homes here and there on the available lots that are currently in Nogales, difference isn't going to be all that much, so.
Because, but the reason is, is, for instance, if you built, if Pinolanca Heights was to be built, most likely it's going to be built by a developer.
Well, Mr. Mayor, then, actually, I misspeaking because I'm getting ahead of myself. That's within the Vivera de Water.
Yes.
Service area, so until we acquire Vivera, then in case we acquire them, we wouldn't be collecting...
But even, even though, even though, what I'm saying is if it was, uh, built by a developer, developers usually is, uh, they built the whole thing for you, kind of like Saguarita. It wasn't built by Saguarita, it was built by the developers. They did the roads, the infrastructure, the landscape, everything, irrigation system, and then they go here. Now it's yours.
Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't.
Well, if you want to have a well-planned community, that's what you, you should be looking for as a city, as a city. To have a, to have a, a well-planned, uh, development, housing development, stuff like that.
So when, when the developer's putting the infrastructure, Mr. Mayor, might correct me if I'm wrong, how does the impact fees or these fees play into that?
Well, one common tool that, uh, cities and developers use is if a developer, for example, was going to build a new water tank that is necessary so that his development has the fire flow, which is, which is, uh, something that happens. Well, then the developer will actually build the tank, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, and then the tank is dedicated and, and the dedication agreement is recorded and that becomes what's called a protected facility. And there's a protected, uh, facility benefit area that is also, uh, approved by city council and recorded. And so any, um, home that gets built in that benefit area and is being, and is using the water, obviously, from that water tank, well, then the connection fees from that home at the development, uh, at the building fee stage is collected by the city and at least a, a good portion of it is remitted then to the developer. So these impact fees or connection fees become a funding mechanism so that the developer can front the cost of, of a, a large piece of infrastructure knowing that as the homes get built, he's going to get repaid. And so that is an example of where a specific piece of infrastructure can be funded in that, in that manner. But the idea is that all of these connection fees go into dedicated segregated capital accounts and then the monies in those accounts can only be used for, uh, capital improvements that benefit the development. So they're already committed to benefiting the development. So when we built, uh, the Extreme West Pressure Zone Water Tank, Mayor, we did use some of these monies for that.
Okay, one more question, John.
Sure.
I, I doubted if you had it with you, John, because, uh, I think, I wish I would have known about this sooner or I would have asked a question or Alejandro Barcenas would have been here. I would like to have seen the number prior to that. You know that, like you said, two thousand and four is when they started, they came and they gave the presentation and, and then they had this, the...
The connection fee prior?
Yeah, you know, what was the, do you know what was the lead from what number to what number?
I don't, Mayor, but I don't, I can...
I, I can, I can almost tell you that it was in a couple thousand.
They raised it a couple, two thousand and four?
I don't, from two thousand and four to, that two thousand seven hundred and eighty-six number?
It was down to the whole thousand?
It couldn't have been, oh, yes, yeah. It should, it would have been closer to the one on the very top of Cottonwood, but they leaked it all the way to the top. And, 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 um, I remember I had just left as public works director when this started happening. I remember Hugh Hollif was working on this. I'll, I'll give you an example, uh, you, you might remember this. I, uh, I, uh, when, when Middle Hills was gonna go off, half of Middle Hills, the northern part of Middle Hills was gonna go up the Setic Tank system because they were gonna put the lift station in there. I remember I was tasked by the council and the city manager to look and see how much it would cost us, the, the city, to make the stub out from the street, the middle of the street where a sewer line would be installed to the property line. So I came up with a number of about two hundred and sixty-five dollars per property, two sixty-five a mass, is that right? They had to cancel, uh, cancel out their Setic Tank, collapse it in place, fill it up with sand, pull it out. And then they would connect to the, our city street, not to the main, middle of the street where the, our line is at to there. So we did all that and I did that presentation right there on the, on the, on the podium. And, uh, a lot of the members of the council accepted that. And, and that was a reasonable, reasonable number, two hundred and sixty-five dollars because it will only take two sections of pipe, a four-inch pipe and a couple of man-hours to do it and the city would make the trench and everything, just put the pipe and make the connection to the street so we won't have a contractor tapping into the sewer line of the city. And, and then after that, they came up with this. And, and, and that's when all this, this is when everything went up. So everybody, they, the decision was made at the time that, yeah, we... So what I'm, what I'm trying to say is that since that day to now, if people have been paying that amount or close to it, by now, don't you think if it's two thousand and four, that's sixteen years, we would have a good pot?
Yeah.
Good pot of money to fix our infrastructure issues or whatever. And, and now that's, I think that's where we got to go, that's the number we got to tap into. What did we pay back then, before they did that study, before the, the city hired that company to come in and, and, and do that study? I think Mayor Kramer was in office at the time, Marco had just left. And, and, uh, and, and so, so I'm a little, now that I look at it, I didn't think, you know, before, before this, I never thought we were gonna be way over a thousand dollars from, you know, Douglas and, you know, all those other cities.
Well, Mayor, we're only a hundred and seventy-five dollars, uh, less than Glendale, but everybody's going to Glendale to build.
But that's what I'm saying and, 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 uh, you know, it's, it's, uh, I think those numbers are, I look at them right now and I, this is the first time I've seen them. I look at them and they're very, very impressive numbers.
And Mr. Mayor, let me, hey, John, can you go Rio Rico?
Yes, sir.
Pull that up, like...
So, you know, what might be a, a good thing if I just go ahead and explain, uh, what, what the spreadsheet is? So I was fortunate that the city of Douglas was doing the same thing that we're doing, so we shared information. Those are, those are some of the cities that we found that have water, uh, development connection fees. I added them all up and, and got the average of it. So the average is, uh, uh, three thousand four hundred and forty-seven dollars and ten cents across the state. And then I just compared each city to the average. If you go look, uh, uh, North Marana's about average and we're, we're right about average here. The next one here is cost recovery.
I have a question, though, Mr. Mayor, I just noticed. Why is a border community like San Luis at five hundred and forty-two dollars? And they have grown and exceeded the population of the city of Nogales. Now they have twelve thousand more inhabitants than we do. I think they just annexed.
Yeah, but that was a smart move, though.
That was the annex of people.
Well, I don't know if they did, I'll have to find out, but five hundred and forty-two, if they annexed, how do they do it, the five hundred and forty-two dollars? And they are growing, but we're not growing.
I'm sure they have other fees.
Yeah, but they might have other fees and, but, but they're growing and the bottom line is they're growing and we're not growing.
Dr. Brown, those are great questions. I, I, all I did was get the data, I didn't go to San Luis and ask them what their situation was, how they came up with that. Haven't done that yet, I, I know that would be something we might want to look at, say, you know, why is it that you're only doing, uh, five hundred and forty-two dollars? You know, do you already have the infrastructure there, is it already there and that's why the, the rate's so, 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 so little or whatever? Yeah, there's just wrong numbers, you know? So the cost recovery is, uh, the expenditure divided by the revenues. If you're equal, it should be one. So if we go to Nogales here, we look that we're less than one. So what this is showing us is that we are spending more to provide water than we're receiving in revenues. If you look at Douglas, they're just about, uh, equal. If we look at, uh, San Luis, uh, they're actually making more, uh, in revenues than, than expenditure.
How do they do that?
Chino Valleys, about like Nogales and what have you. But if you notice, and I did a couple of private waters, their numbers are a lot better. So cities typically are run like an enterprise fund, they're not supposed to make a profit, so they're very close to one. This is a bill comparison, so your average ten thousand gallon, uh, residential customer, this is what they're mostly billed with. We're at thirty-one fifty, San Luis is at twenty-five, Vivera's at forty-two sixteen. And I put Vivera in here, uh, they are private, but I put them in there because they're close to us and, uh, they don't have a connection fee.
Yeah, we pay more water in Vivera, because I'm on Vivera than the city, that we do, but there is no connection.
Black sap's expensive. This is the price per gallon, uh, and this is, uh, this is the price per one thousand gallons at the ten thousand gallon consumption rate. That's, uh, that figure here. And this one, this one was really interesting, this is the community affordability. So what they do is they get the medium income, medium household income and see what, uh, water, uh, bill would have an effect on it. So Nogales, uh, your residents are paying one point three four of their, uh, of their annual income of just water. I was talking with, uh, we, we looked at Scottsdale's, just for fun, and it was point two three. It's not because their water's cheap, it's because their medium, uh, income is a lot higher than the median, bigger number.
What was Doug, let me see Douglas, oh, I can go right here. Douglas is point eight six?
Point eight six.
Point ninety, okay. So we're...
And if anybody's interested, uh, I, I, this is where all this data came from, it's from WIFA. You can plug in your city, there's the city in Nogales, but you can plug in any, uh, any, uh, community you want and we'll give you the information right here.
So what I would like to know, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Mr. Kinsinger, is, I just want to get back to the, the, the former statements of, of the mayor. I would like to know what our rates were in two thousand and four, so I can compare that jump. Because that jump has stifled growth in our community. And the data is indicating that that is one of the reasons. It might not, it might not be an isolated reason, but it is one of the main reasons for me that, uh, we're stagnant. And I, and I don't want to be a stagnant community, I want the community to grow. I mean, I understand that we have to get to repair our, our costs in that. And I understand what Mr. Massey was saying, because if you remember what was said by the Keno Springs developer, "We're going to make this housing development over here." But they also said that, that when we do that, they're going to pay the city of Nogales the, all the connection fees, but you're going to return all of those fees to us. So, and I, I didn't agree with that because we're, we're just the middleman here doing all the, doing the work and we're not getting anything out of it, but I, I don't want to do that and we need to grow. And if we have to lower our costs, I don't care if we lower our cost to have, if we, if we annex, have a Nogales North... if we annex, have a Nogales North, a cost there, those people have to understand that, and then have a Nogales cost. Because people, people may want to build over there, and we have to recoup, you know? This is a business, that's why it's called an enterprise fund, is it has to be self-sustaining. But if we're going to be in, here in the city and we're not selling anything, so what's the point? Where are we going to get money from? Are we going to continue to say, okay, this fund is losing money in water, so what do we do? What do you do, Mr. Johnson? You go to the general fund. You take it out of the general fund and put it into there so that we can make our payment of bills there. So I, I just can't see us continuing to... We're going down the path, and the only solution I've seen in your, this study that Mr. Kishinjeri has, has been very enlightening. But I want to do what you suggested and go back and see that, and I don't care if we do it for a year or two years, but lower the rates and let's see how the contractors come over to build.
Well, what we need to do is, is at least get to when the study was done. If, if it was 2004, it's 2004, when they finished that study. And then, and then another thing we should know is, okay, so if the study was done, say it was 2004, that's sixteen years almost, how much, how much you're buying lunch, okay?
Yeah, I know.
How much, if we do have, how much did we save on this? How much money did we make? Or how much, you know, get an idea, it doesn't have to be exact, John, you know? Kind of like where, where we're at, if we have spent, I know we've, you know, we've done some, I know we have done with the water wells and stuff like that, but, but, you know, we haven't really done big, besides Crawford Street and what we're doing on Purr Keys, I think those are the two biggest jobs we've done.
So, Mr. Mayor, I think we, I think we track the water connection development fees separately in our budget, if I'm not mistaken. So what I can do is go back and see what the, when, when this was adjusted.
That's on me.
Okay?
Yeah.
And then I can look at each annual budget, right? How much, how much is in there? How much have we spent? And then I might be able to find out what we've spent it on, and then bring that all back to you.
You know, because that's, that's what study sessions...
That would help, yeah.
That's what study sessions are for, is to get this information, you know? If I would have known about this, honestly, that's the first time I see you, John. When did you pull this out?
I just finished it yesterday.
Oh, okay. All right. If I would have known about it, I, you know, I would have been in shock in my office, not on the dais. But I, I look at the numbers, I look at the numbers and, 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 you know...
But, but actually, the, the, the comparison numbers, I just learned today, we, all of us knew it was two thousand seven hundred eighty-six for a while, but the comparison's not just...
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
So, my question is, we can, we can figure some of this stuff out, but can we figure out the equation for growth? Like what we need to be char... We could throw a number out there and, and it'd be a dismal failure, or are we willing to pay a consultant or somebody?
We don't, we already paid a consultant. He gave us this damn number, we've got it here. Don't bring another one.
Okay, I just want to find out where we are.
I understand that you're, you're looking at the growth factor, the growth component, which is a legitimate way of trying to interpret the data. Concur with you. But if you go back and look at the data, we're not growing, that's what it's telling me. We're not growing.
Right, right.
Especially when we look at communities to the north of us. Why are they growing? Why is Rio Rico bigger than, than Nogales when Nogales used to supersede Rio Rico? Why? Why is Saguaro going over there and with so many people that work in our community are going over there?
Because, so Mr. Massey and I had a, had a conversation before this meeting about, if you lower the rates, does that automatically create growth? Yes or no? And, and on that, and I didn't know it was that high because, you know, I rent, and I come from Goodyear before I came down here. Goodyear is the most expensive place on that chart. It's the fastest-growing place in the Phoenix area, but they can charge that, and it's probably, it probably costs more up there, but they can charge that because they can, and it's low-hanging fruit, and growth is just exploding. I think conversely, we need to drop our rates some, some, in some manner, so we can actually try to...
Nogales hasn't annexed in over forty-five years.
Right.
Okay. And, and I've been mentioning it to the members of the city council that to be able to, to, and I did this during my campaign too, to be able to grow Nogales and to bring businesses, we need to have incentives and waivers, okay? And I've been wanting the, the previous city manager and the people that I've talked to, and some of them are not here this past year, but since then, I've been telling staff, you know, come up with something. I haven't got anything in my office. And, and, you know, I've been waiting for you to wet your feet, so you can talk, we can talk about that. But, but, you know, to find out, what do you think we should do to wait? What do you think we should do to have incentives? I know what Tucson does, you know, I know what other communities done because I've talked to them. And, and they offer a lot of things to businesses. We don't have anything to offer. We don't offer anybody nothing, okay? So, so if we can't offer anything, maybe, maybe a drop on some of these rates for, for the industrial part, you know, assembly lines, businesses to come in? You know, I, I would love to see manufacturing come back to Nogales, because that brings a lot of jobs and full-time jobs and year-round jobs, you know? So, so I'll just tell you a story, back in, in 2002, there was a company, Wiser Lock was coming to Nogales. And I remember I, being the public works director, recommended to the mayor and council at the time, for us to give them a break on the sanitation, the water and sewer and everything. They all agreed. But they also wanted a break on the property tax. The county said no. Okay, so what did they do? Jumped over the fence, and they're over there right now. And they've been there since. It was almost two hundred employees we lost. And then, yeah, and they were going to be wherever an industry was going to be, remember? Yeah. So, so we, we lost out. We have to have something to offer. If they're going to come in, you know, and they're going to bring, they're going to hire two hundred people, you know, that's something good that we can say, you know, okay, you hired two hundred people, we give you this. But, you know, don't leave in thirty days or something, you know? Have something, you agree with them, and, and I know Tucson does that, and other communities do that. That's how they get those big companies to come in. And sometimes they talk about, oh, well, we don't have the workforce, so we don't have the educated people that we need. No. Yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
I agree.
Yes, we do. But the thing is that we have to offer a little bit more as a city, as a city. So maybe, maybe let's think about that, okay? And, 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 and if we have to bring this back to a study session with intention of doing something, let's do that again. But let's not wait six months from now, okay? How about like next month? All right?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Also, if we're, if we're going to do, I, I would suggest, you know, I don't know where they got these figures from, but calling these cities and just having them fax us or email us what the complete costs are. Because it's just as an idea, in Tucson, yeah, they've, they've got the houses, they, they quote you a certain price on the house, then you find out there's an HMO involved, right? There's the homeowners association, they have, they have different, different fees. And, you know, I know people that qualify for paying twenty-two hundred dollars a month for, for a home. All of a sudden, when they figure out all the other fees, they add up to seven hundred dollars more a month, and they don't qualify anymore. So, you know, just looking at certain specific things, we've got to look at the whole picture, or else we're, we're going to be jumping in there without really knowing exactly where we're going, right? So let's get the whole thing, I'm sure any of the cities, if we call Tucson, they'll email us what we need to know, exactly what their fees are.
But you know, Mr. Johnson, if we don't have any planned growth, like if we don't have an opportunity, and we don't even have property in the city of Nogales for, for subdivision, about three hundred homes, then we really don't have where to spend money on infrastructure. So the only infrastructure we're going to do is fix what we have, and, and, and repair the lines while we're paving streets. So we're not spending these millions of dollars to improve a district or improve a certain area like they do it in big cities. So, so I really don't think we have this, this pot of gold waiting for us to say, okay, now we're going to spend money. You know, let's figure it out now. If we were to bring a, a, a company that's going to come in, and I'll give an example, Norah Garcia, if he decides to develop, there's, he's, he's going to, he's going to be putting in a lot of, a lot of infrastructure himself. From what I understand, I think he's already doing that. And I think he's doing the roads himself.
I can see him from my house.
Yeah.
But that's, that's an all-development.
Yeah. So, so, you know, what we're going to have is, waiting for him is this connection fee. You know, esto te va a costar. You know, so if you put a two-inch meter, well, expect, you know, a warehouse easily can be sixty thousand dollars. The port of entry, I think, was like four hundred thousand. The courthouse, the jail, that's four hundred thousand dollars connection. You know, so, so those are huge connection fees that we have there, that we have already charged and, and are there. Now, where are we going to take that? I, I don't know. We, we, we have to, we have to study this, and we have to think about it. It's not just, it's just, not just talk about it, I think we need to, we need to get staff, you know, working on this.
Just a question. John, that, that water, that sewer break that came in, that, you know, from, from the Coronado area and including the city hall, who's paying for that? Are we getting a grant? We're paying for it, and where does that, that money come from?
We pay it out of our sewer fund.
That comes, that's, we're, we're not getting a grant for it? Is there such a thing as getting a grant for that, or?
There's such a thing as getting a grant, but that's an emergency, so we've just got to get that thing done.
It's got to get done.
Yeah.
But that's coming out of, of the sewer fund, which basically was money we were charging for connection fees, or?
I don't know if we'll be able to use sewer connection fees for that. I don't know how much we're collecting in that area, but it'll, it'll come out of the sewer fund.
But, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
But that had to do with obsolete, outdated, aging pipe?
Yes, sir, that pipe was put in in nineteen fifteen.
Well, that, that, that's part of the system when we raise all of these rates and we don't take care of these problems though, too. Back to Mr. Johnson, getting back to the latter points that the mayor made, please don't forget, when you bring back your recommendations, especially as his latter statements had to do with economic development, what you said during your interview process. And you said that in order to attract these kinds of businesses that we need in this community, that you felt it could not be done unless we had a full-time economic development director. So I'm looking forward to seeing that in your presentation. Thank you, Mayor.
John, you think, you done with that?
Done if you say I'm done, sir.
Is there anything else? If there's anything else, we'll just move to the other one. Are we okay?
We're okay.
Okay.
But we will talk about this for sure at the next meeting.
Yes, yes, we will. It'll be a study session, it'll be a study session, and then we should have different numbers on that. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Okay, number two, discussion, charter change. Mr. Massey?
Yes, I have, Mr. Mayor, two proposals for potential charter change amendments, and I'll pass out a rough draft of, first, the one that relates to revamping the Chapter Eight regarding the administration of the city government. So let me go ahead and pass this out then.
Mr. Massey, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Massey? But what you're giving us now, we're already going to include as a charter change what we agreed upon for the court system, right?
Yes, that has already been approved by city council, and that language has been submitted to the county for inclusion as a local proposition at the general election in November. And so this is another potential local proposition that would be presented to the electorate at the general election in November third of 2020. And so this, the, I think the one that we adopted would be Proposition 405, and this could be like Proposition 406 or 407, depending upon the order that we present them. But, and, and this is, this is kind of scary, so what, what I want to show you also, let's see here, is, is there's a lot of striking out, but then at the same time, we're only adding three section. So right now, what it says is, Chapter Eight, Section 66, 67, 67A, 68, 68A, 69, 70, 72, and 73 are hereby repealed or deleted in their entirety and replaced by new Chapter Eight Administration, Sections One through Three. And then the rest of the sections in Chapter Eight relating to the administration would be renumbered, and then they would be Sections Four and following. So this is where we've had, you know, a study session discussion in the past about how the charter sets out the departments in, you know, in detail and by specificity. And then the proposal, if you would direct your attention to page three of this packet, is where we start with the new Chapter Eight. It's on page three. And so Section One is, upon recommendation of the city manager, the city council by ordinance or resolution may create, change, and abolish offices, departments, boards, and commissions. And that comes right from the City of Phoenix charter language. And then Section Two, it continues again from City of Phoenix charter language. Department heads generally divisions of departments, appointment of officers, et cetera. And so 2A, at the head of each department of the city shall be a director, who shall be an officer of the city and shall have supervision and control of the department subject to the city manager. Two or more departments may be headed by the same individual. The manager may head one or more department, and directors of departments may also serve as chiefs of divisions. And that's a new phrase that we're using, chiefs of divisions, but it's, it's more explanatory under B. The work of each department may be distributed among such divisions thereof as may be established by ordinance or resolution upon the recommendation of the city manager, pending the passage of an ordinance or resolution distributing the work of departments under the supervision and control of the manager among specific divisions thereof. The manager may establish temporary divisions. So the idea is departments can come and go by resolution of the city council. Departments can be broken up into divisions. Department directors can be in charge of divisions. Creates just a little bit more flexibility than what we see right now in the city charter, where you have specific departments, such as the health department, where we don't have a health department. We haven't had a health department for many, many years.
Mr. Mayor, the only thing that I do like, that Councilman Rojas has alluded to, but I want to make sure that I'm clear. Now, the manager makes a recommendation to appoint John Doe as XYZ director, and it has to be with the consent of the mayor and council.
I will get to that right now, Mr. Mayor, or Mr. Mayor and Councilman Verona. So those are the first two sections. Then at the bottom, it says Section C, and then I'm just putting here in brackets right now, pick one of the following. So if you turn the page, and then the, it's not one and two, it's one or two, and I can present that when we put a document together for council consideration and possible action. The appointment of all officers of the city shall devolve on the city manager, except those specifically set forth here as direct appointments of council. That's the option that is in the City of Phoenix charter, and that is the option that is currently consistent with our charter, with the Nogales charter. Number two, then, comes from the City of Tucson charter, and it says, the police chief, fire chief, finance director, human resources director, housing director, public works director, parks and recreation director, library director, and any other director of a department created by city council pursuant to... a department created by city council pursuant to this chapter shall be appointed by the manager with the consent and approval of city council, and each of said officers shall hold office until removed or reduced in rank by the manager. None of the civil service protections of the charter ordinances or regulations shall apply to these officers, except that removal or reduction in rank is subject to advisory appeal to the appeals commission. That pretty much comes right out of the City of Tucson charter. And, and I don't know how much of that language you want, but I'm putting that out there as an option.
And that, number two, is exactly what it was when we had a strong form of mayor governance, except it's not the manager, it said the mayor with a consent. But it's, no, but that is exactly what a strong form of mayor governance was. There's two, there's two points here, one being the City of Phoenix, which aligns parallel to our city charter. And number two is, we wanna have a little bit more say in who are the department heads, not getting involved on the selection process, but just dealing with the recommendation of the manager. I'd like to think about it a little bit more, I, but I wanna make sure that we meet all the timelines.
Yes, uh, if we adopt this by July, we should make the, the general. But I'm proposing to put this on the agenda for next month for possible action, and if there, if the council needs more time, or we end up marking it up, we should have plenty of time to make sure that we adopt it by July.
Well, I, I think another thirty days would be good. I mean, it's just our recommendation to the people, they will make the ultimate decision. But right now, I, I'm kinda leaning toward number two.
Councilman Rojas, you're the one that brought this.
Well, I wanna thank, uh, Mr. Massey first of all, for all the work that you did in preparing this. Mr. Massey, and for, uh, following the, the directions of the mayor and the council. Uh, you did exactly, uh, what we wanted here. And, uh, I tend to agree with, uh, Councilman Verona that I like number two, would lean towards number two. But, um, I wanna thank you once again, you know, because this, I think exactly what's, what's gonna help the, the city and the mayor and the council as well. Thank you, Mayor.
And if I could mention one more thing then, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Uh, the personnel manual that we have obviously is not consistent with number two. And so the department directors that have been hired under the, uh, provisions of the personnel manual, that's basically now forming a contract that forms their terms and conditions of employment. And, uh, the general rule is, you can't unilaterally change the terms of a contract. So this would really be, uh, prospective to new hires, and it wouldn't change the terms and conditions of the current.
And I just think, Mayor, in the spirit of fear and the spirit of fairness, I concur with you. There's gotta be a spirit of fairness in the way to do this.
Uh, so that, this is a, uh, a rough, relatively rough draft, and I'll finalize it into an action document. But the other document that I have, I think, is a little bit more final, uh, and it's more into an actual, how a res, similar to what we did with the municipal court. So if we could pass that along.
Mr. Mayor, may I make one more comment? I would like to hear from the other council members, as well as from the vice mayor, uh, about this, uh, proposition, if that's okay.
Yes, I agree, I agree with that number two, uh, also. I think it's a, it's a fair, it's a fair, uh, proposition, so I'm in favor of that.
Councilman Verona?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, I meant to interrupt you here. You know, I was looking at him and I said, Verona.
It's Trump's here, I'm a conservative.
Mr. Hanizan, I'm sorry, Mr. Hanizan.
I, I would like to see the complete, what it is. I've always said we should have a little more say in it. How much more say, I don't know, but, you know. So I'd just like to take a look at what, what Mr. Massey says will be the final, final draft.
So, so Councilman, um, Hanizan, you're in favor of continuing?
I'm in favor of the idea.
Yes.
Exactly what the idea will be, you know.
Pursuing it.
You know, we should have some say in it. How much say is exactly, you know, I've gotta really consider that, right? Because then it does change everything to where, obviously, the city manager will be suggesting somebody recommend.
Yeah, he will recommend somebody, and then we would just either go ahead and say yes or no. As long as we, as long as we are not involved in, 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 when they're, when they're meeting with these people, that we say, you know, let's give so-and-so because he's from Nogales a better chance, or, or something like that, that's where I think then we would get into trouble.
Yes, I agree with that. Finally, after three years, you're making sense.
Mayor. I, I also, I also agree, uh, you know, just, uh, the one thing that popped into me was, uh, basically, how does everybody feel on, on the two or more departments, uh, maybe held by, by the same individual, you know?
On the chief of division, you mean?
Well, yeah, you know, you know.
Well, in the, I think, uh, in the past, the city.
Have we, what's the experience we've had with something like that?
I, I don't think it's, uh, in the past, you know, actually, the public works director in the past, uh, was in charge of planning and zoning and, and also engineering. He was in charge of everything, and the police department was in charge of the dog pop. So, you know, those, we, Mr. Massey and I, we were talking about that. Those are things that in the city charter should, should, you know, we have to look at those things.
Being a small city, it's, you know, you gotta be flexible, do more than one job, I think. That's, that's something, uh, good about it, but.
But, but, you know, you know, it's, it's, it's good to have somebody that can, that could, uh, you know, if you're lacking a one director for a certain amount of time, then you take over, be, uh, the chief of both, uh, both, uh, two departments.
We've had experience.
Similar departments, I mean, not, not public works and police, you know? But I mean, within, within the same scope, I think, of public works. Public works is probably the only place where you could, you could find something like that, because you have a, you have a, uh, public works director, then you have finance and, and engineering and stuff like that.
And the other thing, Mr. Massey, just recall, uh, you mentioned right now that it is one or two, right?
One or two? It says, uh.
Yes.
Pick one of the five.
Oh, one or two, oh, yes, under number C.
Yeah.
Correct.
That's just.
Correct. So my, my idea is, uh, we'll try to make it as user-friendly as possible, and, you know, the motion, you know, if any, would be, uh, I move to adopt with option number one or with option number two, and then if there's a majority, then we don't go to the other option.
Okay.
And then that's the one that gets printed up and submitted to the voters.
Thank you.
Well, uh, really, what my thinking is, I was in favor of a city manager form of government, so I'm in favor of number one.
No, but you still have a city manager there.
Yeah, but it's a little, I, I don't know. I, I'm supposed to, that's why we have a city manager. We're supposed to be responsible for that. Why should we get involved? That's my thinking. So to me, number one would be my choice.
Is that it?
Mr. Mayor, maybe to, um, to clarify with Councilwoman Lopez, you're right, and, and we agreed to that. We don't really wanna get into the, the day-to-day, but sometimes, and we have had the situation, at least the time that I've been here, and I'm sure that all of us have, that sometimes certain things aren't moving. We're not getting the results, and, and we remain stagnant, and it, it comes back to us, worging for certain things not getting done. And that's, that's a lot of stress for us, because we're moving. I don't know how many times in the five years that I've been here, where things were brought up and given direction, and I, in a way, I, I wanted to compliment, uh, Mr. Massey for getting the direction from, from us and giving us results, like what he did. But there, there were times within those five years, and I'm just talking for myself, that direction was given and, and things just remained stagnant. And of course, then, the other thing that we have are when we have different managers, where, where we experienced that. One manager from another manager, and things were being done. It throws the staff out, where staff would wanna do that, maybe they don't have the power for that. And this right here, hopefully, will get things in, in sync to get things done for the city. And it's just, uh, that's the way I see it.
I'll add, I, can I add just one thing?
Sure.
Maybe we're not having the right city manager in the best, maybe that was our problem.
Yes, go ahead. I just wanna respond to Councilwoman Melendez Lopez. Twenty years ago, we went from a strong form of mayor government to city management. And I had to fight city hall. They wouldn't even approve, so we had to get the wording by petitions ourselves to do this, and it was a fight, but we took it up. I'm a proponent of a city manager form of government, that's what I thought. But I, I don't think that we're deviating with number two from city manager form of government. I go back to Councilman Hanizan once, which are, well, taken. We're not going to interfere with him on the day-to-day. He's gonna make a recommendation to us, we say yes or no. If we say no, it goes back to him, he comes back with somebody else.
He's still the manager doing the work.
He's still gonna be doing it. We still don't have any right to go into his office and say, well, I think you should hire him, and he has complete control of it. I just think we're in a position right now that the City of Tucson was with their city manager form of government, and the people went, and they said, we want our elected officials to have more of a say, because they were like the City of Phoenix, but the people were the ones, because they weren't getting responses. So they wanted the elected official just to have a say on that, but not to interfere with the day-to-day management of city government. So I don't think, looking at number two, is in any way deviating from the concept of...
Of city management.
City management.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Just one point I thought, um, Councilman Maldonado made. Uh, the existing directors, if they're gonna be reporting to, to a top director, do they maintain their same title and position, or do they, they reduce them in rank, or?
Well, actually, that, that would be up to the city manager. Anything that was, were to happen within the directors, it's the city manager that would do it. First of all, um, to be able to do, you know, to have one director take authority over other departments, like a public works, that's where you, that's where you have an organizational chart. And if he wants to create that, to, to have somebody over somebody else, give him more authority for a job, that's, that's the city manager. But I mean, to take that responsibility from another director, I, I would say that, you know, that's not an easy task. And, and I, I honestly, I don't think it would be that easy for him just to do and make a change like that. Mr. Johnson?
I get, Mr. Mayor, any structural organizational change, I think I mentioned it in the interview, it would be carefully analyzed based on workload analysis. The only, the only reason to make a structural change is to improve efficiency or effectiveness of the organization, not just come in and arbitrarily like, I'm gonna change this, I'm gonna put my stamp on it. That's not how I like to operate. I like to make educated decisions based on a, a clear workload analysis about work, work hours and output produced. And, and sometimes you might come up with the, the solution that you need to reorganize because we're wasting a lot of hours and money over here, where we could streamline something, or even, or even make a, an organization a little flatter, take some levels out of the structure, and it may improve communication, may improve output, efficiency, and everything. That's our, and that's the only reason I would reorganize or change anything. Do, do I think that needs to happen here? Absolutely, just based on my fourth weekend, just tree-top assessment, but I don't know that to be true, because I haven't drilled down into the workload processes that, that I want to, but that's the only reason I would reorganize anything. But sometimes, there may be a need to do that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
If I may follow up with that, Mr. Johnson? I think this also gives the man, manager more flexibility to kind of adapt the organization to meet his, his needs. And if another manager would come in, he would be able to do that as well. But we basically would stay out of his, uh, his business.
Yep, and the other thing I wanna highlight on this discussion is to make sure what the latter points of Mr. Massey was, Councilwoman Melendez Lopez, this, number two, is not to tell department heads presently, if this passes, we got you.
Yeah.
We need to remember what Mr. Massey says, they're grandfathered into the old system. This is if somebody decides to leave, then the new person would fall under that structure. So this isn't something that we're trying to tell anybody that's an employer right now, we're gonna change it so we can come back and catch you. That's not about that at all. So I wanna make sure that that's, that point is taken and is based on legal council opinion, so this is not a change to the charter to try and get somebody out or anything like that. That's the city manager responsible. This is, when some person leaves, then that will be implemented, then you process, correct, Mr. Massey?
I think that's a fair summary.
Okay.
It's fair, or is it directly what we want?
You tell me. It's fair. I don't know. Councilman, it is fair. Fair is fair. All right, well, let's go, let's go to the, uh, Mr. Massey, that you just passed us.
Thank you, yes, I, I passed out, um, and this is an actual resolution, uh, format of, uh, the proposal, uh, as it relates to the elections chapter, which is, um, chapter four. And I, and I also passed out, so that you can see what the current chapter four of the charter looks like. And so what it, what it says here is, um, if you, if I could just, uh, direct your attention down to the first, or the bottom of the first page, and says, official title, a resolution of the council of the City of Nogales proposing an amendment to the city charter, chapter four, nominations and elections, repealing and replacing section nineteen, adding new sections twenty and twenty-one, because right now, twenty and twenty-one are repealed, and there's nothing there, repealing and replacing section twenty-six and amending section thirty-six. So, uh, the two pages that I passed out from the charter show you kind of the layout right now, what, what the, um, what the provisions are in the charter, and I'll tell you, in my twelve years here, when it comes to elections and the management of elections, we don't refer to the city charter. It's like, the city charter is over here, and election law is here, and we go into title sixteen, and title sixteen has all the provisions. So, um, my sense is that chapter four is not very helpful, because it's, it, first of all, it, it doesn't reflect current state law, and in, in particular, um, I would like to draw your attention on section nineteen, and I highlighted a couple of areas where section nineteen right now is very far out of compliance with state law, uh, in the sense that the primary election, it's telling us that our primary election has to be held on the eighth Tuesday prior to the general election, and we haven't had a pri, and that's like, um, about, uh, that's September, it's either early to mid-September. And we haven't had a primary election in September for about twenty years. And so the City of Nogales has, and I think properly so, realized that we can't do our own primary, we have to have our primary in conjunction with the county and state primary. And so this has been just set aside.
But, Mr. Massey, Mr. Vice Mayor? We could, like other cities, because this has been a contention with the state. We could, like other cities, because this has been a contention with the state legislature, we could still have our elections in May and April.
Right, because we're a charter city.
Yes, because other charter schools do not go with it. We decided, because I was on the council way back when it was originally repealed in, in April nineteen eighty-five, as a cost-saving, because we were having elections in April and May, and then there were other elections in September and November. And we thought that was ridiculous to put the community through all of these elections in six months.
And I totally understand and agree, and I, personally, I agree with that sentiment. I just think the language that was incorporated was, unfortunately, in a way, the intent was to coincide with the primary. And so that intent is what has happened in the last twenty years. We have done the city's primary in conjunction with the county and the state primary. But the language of the Charter was too specific, because that's when the primary was, back in the eighties. And that hasn't been the date of the primary since the nineties. So, and now, just this year, we've changed the primary to the first Tuesday of August. So now, it's not even the tenth Tuesday before the general, it's more like the thirteenth Tuesday before the general. So, 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 so my original idea was just to go into Section Nineteen and just change that. And I've also highlighted where it says for a term of two years, there's another provision in the Charter that changed council terms to four years. And so I thought, oh, this is going to be so easy, we're just going to change two. Well, then I started looking at it and trying to come up with the idea of making the whole chapter a little bit more user-friendly, and ended up just rewriting Section Nineteen. So what you see is the strikeout of all of Section Nineteen. And then if I can just read the, the proposal, which is in the capital, I know that's really hard to read when it's all in caps like that. And that's what it will look like in the publicity pamphlet. You, you, you put all the strikeouts and you put all the caps out there in the publicity pamphlet, but what is actually on the ballot is at the very, is the very top, which is the official title and descriptive title. And then at the very bottom, where it says a yes vote shall have the effect, and a no vote shall have the effect. That's all that's on the ballot.
But, just out of curiosity, there's a, a charter here that says that the, the city clerk shall hold, preserve, shall preserve in his or her office for a period of two, all petitions or nominations. Doesn't that, I don't know, I don't think it changed that, but does that go back to state, along five years that you have to keep all records?
I would have to look that up.
The state library tells you.
Well, whatever, but I don't think it's two years. I think it's, but, and the other thing is-
It has changed a lot, Mr. Verona. So I really don't have the-
Well, if it changes a lot, then we should do something.
I'll have to look into that.
And the other one is here, that it's the city clerk who's taking care of the canvassing of the ballots.
No.
She has nothing to do with the canvassing of the ballots.
Well, the, the language is that it's the mayor and council canvass the ballots.
You guys need a sneakers. You guys are hungry. I want you to-
Yeah, we're going to be nice, this is nice, nice, nice.
What about if you're forgetting the- No, no, he can't, he's not up here. Until you're on the hot seat, it's going to-
So, at any rate, I'll have to look into that, Councilmember Verona, but I'll just go with what I'm looking at in Section Nineteen.
But these other ones that I'm talking about, I mean, if we're going to clean this up, let's clean it up.
Yes.
Or take it out completely. Like Section Thirty-Four to me, and, and Section Twenty-Seven, we should take it out. Because it's basically governed by state statute. So why do we, why are we cleaning it up and leaving those things in there for? I mean, just take it out.
Well, I, I-
Unless you find something that ARS says we can't do it, otherwise, I think we should clean it up now that we're doing it. It doesn't have to be replaced, it needs to just be taken out because of-
And so that was Section City Clerk, Twenty-Seven and Thirty-Four, right?
Twenty-Seven and Thirty-Four.
Let me look into that and, and I may need to, at any rate, I, I will amend as necessary?
Yes.
And try to bring something that is ready for adoption next month and, but if we-
Even Section Twenty-Five, the petitions are governed by the state statute.
Right, now, here, Section Twenty-Five.
The certificate of candidacy. See, all of that?
Certificate of-
Because I don't want somebody to say, oh, I, I beat somebody for, for the office of the city council, and he says, but wait a minute, you did it wrong, I did it this way. This is what your charter says you have to do. I don't want to get into that conflict.
Okay.
So if you can just-
Points well made, Councilmember Verona. And I'll have to look into that further. So what, what this is telling me is, I'm only halfway there.
Okay.
But look at, look at everything that we've already got, though, just being a little bit halfway there, there's, there's quite a, quite a bit. And so we're rewriting Section Nineteen. Section Twenty is nomination papers and petition, again, taking state law, putting it in the Charter, making the Charter a little bit more user-appropriate, user-friendly, so you don't have to go around to state law to look at how nomination papers and petitions should be submitted to the clerk. And then writing candidates, that's also right from state law. And it does say, but I just would refer your attention to the very bottom there, it says, a candidate who ran in the first or primary election and failed to qualify as a candidate in the second or general election may not run as a write-in candidate in that election unless one of the candidates in the general election after the deadline for submission of valid language has withdrawn, died, or been disqualified. So again, that's putting a couple of different provisions from state law in one place, which is, I think, more user-friendly.
Wouldn't it just be simple to just tell the people, we're doing away with Section Nineteen?
Or rewriting Section Nineteen.
Just say, we're doing away with Section Nineteen. All elections under Section Nineteen, anything, will be governed by Arizona revised statute.
We could do that.
Well, to me, it's simple, it's not, it's not confusing, because that's what we're doing. If a candidate wants to do something like a candidate did in the previous election, you don't come to this, you go to the state law. What the state law does, that's what governs us here. We're not trying to, you know, when this was done over a hundred years ago, it was proper.
Nineteen twenty-six.
Nineteen twenty, oh, okay. Almost there. But Mayor, I just think for the people, they don't want to read it. They just, what is it you want to do? We just want to update, to tell you, we've been governed by Arizona revised statute. That's what we want everybody to know, that our Charter says we are, our elections are governed by ARS. That's it.
And, but I would recommend making specific that our elections are going to be in conjunction with state and county, and even number years, and primary likewise.
The only difference, the only difference is that we can go back, that, that we're not governed by the state, is that we're not governed by the state as far as term limitations. That's the only thing. We are limited to term terms. The state doesn't have that limitation. So they rotate, but that's the only thing you have to make clear. The two-term limitation is in place.
You don't want to be here till twenty thirty-two?
No, I don't.
The, Mr. Mayor, if I can be heard, I would also recommend, though, to make clear that every even number year, we are electing three council members and the mayor if the mayor's term terminates that January. And so it's, it becomes very explicit that we're, you know, rotating and staggering the terms.
You bring up a good point, Mr. Massey. I just want to make sure, bring this out now. If I leave office, if I tell you I'm going to leave office on Friday, there was some Charter changes on how you replace me. This section doesn't have anything to do with that.
No, no, that's in another provision. That's in another provision. So I, I-
We'll, we'll replace you. That's all I can say.
That's a good person.
Did you submit your resignation letter already or no?
No.
Okay.
All right. So, Mr. Mayor and members of council, I mean, I'm not hearing from a lot of council members, but I'm assuming that there's some nods going on, that I'll just take what I have here and start over to get to a very simple statement that our elections are pursuant to Arizona's, but, you know, uneven number of years and things like, just kind of generalize it like that, and then strike everything. Strike everything and just say we're, we're pursuant to Arizona revised statute.
I'll see in the final.
Okay. All right, I'll bring something like that again back for-
It'd be easier to pass than anything else.
Yeah, keep it simple.
Is that all Mr. Massey?
I think, that's all I have, is these two provisions that I'm ready to discuss today.
Mr. Mayor? I want to ask Mr. Massey a question. Mr. Massey, you didn't present what I asked you to present, when I want something on the agenda or council or something on the agenda. Now, it's supposed to be a Charter change, remember I brought it up last night?
You, you did bring it up last night.
And you didn't present it?
I didn't present it today, I could present it next month.
Okay.
I, these are the only two that I'm ready to, to, I mean, it's, we've got it till July.
Give the man a chance, Brandon's got it worked.
No. Believe me, he's, he's going.
He's been here like half a day or something like that.
That long?
And he already wants to leave. Okay, we're done then.
I, I think I've got direction. I've got direction. Thank you.
All right, Massey, I'm going home now.
He's adjourned.